Call this meeting to an end with the Fledgling Edgins. Our Fledgling Edgins. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under thy individual liberty and justice for all. Roco.
Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue, here. Donahue, here. Holly, here. Holly, here. Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald, here. Ossling.
Here.
Ossling, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Kulis. Kulis, absent. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Frostop. Frostop, absent. Bellato. Bellato, absent. Viera.
Here.
You, here. A lot of pleasure.
Thank you very much. Presentation, general proceedings, I need a motion to approve the City Council minutes for the date of July the 11th, 2017. Do I have a motion by Alderman Carr, second by Alderman Slattery? Any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. A lot of pleasure.
Thank you very much. Council? You are all welcome to tonight's meeting. Our flag has reminded the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please approach the podium, announce your name and address, what you've been recognized by the mayor. Please be further advised, comments may be limited to three minutes according to the appropriated city personnel or individual follow-up.
Thank you. Anyone? Any comments? I see some movement. I'll need your name and address.
Good evening. I am Gia Orr, G-I-A-O-R-R. I am a homeowner at 12231 Fairway Circle in the Greens of Blue Island. And I am standing here today actually representing three entities. So first and foremost, I am the Director of Community Relationships with Illinois Guardianship and Advocacy Commission. And realize and have indicated that Blue Island is one of our target areas, not just Blue Island, but the far southern suburbs as we target safeguarding the rights of persons with disabilities. And most likely, more people are familiar with us by way of Office of State Guardian. There are two other programmatic arms, that's the Human Rights Authority and the Legal Advocacy Services, which 21 lawyers right now would be really mad at me because I stuttered over that. I'm more specifically coming to speak with you and to offer Human Rights Authority, which investigates allegations of human rights violations per Illinois Developmental Disability and Mental Health Code in public institutions. And so that could mean CILs, which are Community Integrated Living Arrangements, as well as any other facilities operated by a public entity. I have flags here both for the public and for the aldermen and alderwomen, so that you can have more familiarity with this state agency, which is still in existence, barely, but still. And still offering services to the citizens of Illinois. We know that the southern suburbs has not been covered entirely by our agency, and as I stated, it is a target area under my direction. I'm also a Chief Results Officer and the EEOAA 504 Officer for that agency. So I'll take that hat off. And I'm also standing here as a Cook County Commissioner for the Cook County Commission on Human Rights, which I've been on for a year. And we toggle along the same lines, except for the difference is, of course, the Human Rights Commission of Cook County hears more cases that has to do with employment. My commission just released prior to July 1st, the regs with relation to the minimum wage ordinance and the Earn-Sickley ordinance, of which I know Blue Island opted out of and was one of the last to do so. Once everything gets settled with Home Rule and et cetera with Commissioner Suffertin, I am offering myself to a resource, as a resource, for the aldermen and alderwomen, as well as the citizens of Blue Island, so that those regs that we went over and did within six months of that ordinance being passed in October and our regs being due by July 1st to the public, it is rather lengthy and it is rather worky, we understand. And so we're offering a public service for either myself or anyone else on the commission or the executive director, Ranji, touch him, to come out and have conversations that relate to both of those ordinances. That hat off. Lastly, I see here is the President of Blue Island's, Greens of Blue Island, which is the Townhome Association, right adjacent to and shares space with the driving range. I am the newly appointed president. I have my other board members back here with me. And we have a few questions that we wanted to put on record, although Alderman Carr, alderwoman, Carr and I are slated to meet tomorrow. We had a little difficulty with meeting on yesterday, but we are meeting tomorrow. But I do want to put these questions on record, one being, we'd like to know what the exact boundaries are for our Townhome Association, so that we can stop the kind of pitty tat back and forth with the golf course and et cetera, so we know where our beautification and our landscape when everything begins and ends. Secondarily, we'd like to know the very beginning, and some of you have been on the council for awhile or have been involved for awhile, so you may know, the very beginning where Con Ed and the Greens of Blue Island share a little corner space, we'd like to know where that begins and ends, as their own tire tracks and railroad nails that are laying back there, we need to know if that's our responsibility to have removed, or is it theirs, and if it is theirs, we'd like to have it removed. The largest thing which Alderman Carr and I will try to tackle tomorrow is the fact that Fairway Circle was never dedicated as a street in Blue Island back in 99. And so with that, we do, while we have the luxury, of course, of trash collection, we do not have streets, meaning potholes, which right now there are potholes the size of craters in the middle of the street. I called, because I talked with several people who work for Public Works, and were informed that it is not a city street, therefore it's our responsibility to fill the potholes and such. And so we'd like to have some conversations about that, just to see where our options are, if there are any, and again, to move forward, what our boundaries are, what that plat or that survey is. And so any help from anybody with that would be greatly appreciated.
We will get that information to you.
All right. Thank you so very much, and have a great day.
Could I ask you one question, though?
Sure.
Pamphlet or flyer that you have in hand, are they in any other language?
They are. I do not have them with ink, but I do have them translated.
It would be nice to have.
Both Spanish and Polish.
It would be nice to have them in both, I would imagine, to us all.
Will do. I'll bring them up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? I just need your name and address.
My name is Nancy Stewart, and I live at 2646 Cochran in Blue Island. I've lived here all my life. I'd like to know, did we really have to buy city stickers? Because I see half my neighborhood does not have them. Aren't they going to check at these people?
Yes, they are. In fact, they'll probably be starting, if they haven't started already, they're going to be hit very, very hard.
Because, I mean, I see this, and I'm driving in Blue Island, and nobody has them?
Mayor, if I may, we started the enforcement action at midnight last night.
Okay.
I believe over 50 or 55 tickets were issued last night. Now we're just in one section, so they will be going out every night at midnight now. We did have a little bit of a grace period, and...
They never used to.
They've always, they've always had a grace period, but we started the enforcement action, and it started last night.
All right. Thank you.
Me too. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'll move on to my business. Reported city official's presentation, resolutions. I have two pieces of information here. Number one, with sadness, if everybody knows or knew, Jerry Lee Osberg, she's being waked tonight at Creeder Funeral Home. She was, she worked for the city of Blue Island for many years, both in the senior center, at the clerk's office, in the building department, sometime at the police station. So she was out in every single department, wherever we needed her, she filled in her space. So again, cremation is private, but it's from tonight, today from 3:00 PM until 9:00 PM. So if you get a chance, please go and pay her respects. Again, should be deeply missed. Been speaking briefly with her husband, they had known each other for around 50 years. They were married 47, you know, whatever years, so again, should be deeply missed. And also as a city employee. My second piece of information, I'm informing the aldermen that I'm still evaluating, so you know the appointments, I haven't forgotten about them. Again, all department heads, the directors, attorneys, I still haven't made a decision yet as to that. A review in our present people, the people who are present in those positions, and we'll hopefully within the next few weeks, I'll have the list ready for you and present it before the whole city council. So I will personally present the names of those candidates and bring it before the council for each respective position. Any bids?
I have, there's two bids that are going to be addressed in the finance section.
Okay. City clerk's business?
Yes, I need a motion to approve of request from Virginia Castro to have a block party on Grove Street on July 29th from 2:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
You have a motion? Motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions?
What's the, what's the address on Grove?
23124, Grove. Is that Virginia Castro?
Yes.
Oh, there's?
Is that the right address?
No.
Oh. Yeah.
2112.
Grove and Grove.
Grove and Grove. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I don't know.
Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you very much.
I need a motion to approve of request from Calgary Chapel, Blue Island, for back-to-school backpack giveaway on Saturday, August 12th, with the train date of August 19th, from 12:00 PM until 4:00 PM.
You have a motion by Alderman Pittman, number second. By Alderman, ma'am, I'm having a bad day. A lot of driving. Any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you very much.
Last, I need a motion to approve our request from Maple Tree to have their barbecue blues and bluegrass fest on Sunday, August 13th from 4:00 PM until 9:00 PM.
We have a motion. Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Farrenwald. Any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No further business, your honor.
Thank you. City attorney?
No business.
Committee reports, committee, development committee?
Yes, your honor, community development committee met on July 6th, 2017, not 2107. The meeting was called to order at 7:07 PM. Present were Alderman Holly, Bellato, Rita, and Thompson, absent were Alderman Frostop, Ossling, and Johnson. Also present were resident Kathy Haskell, Commander Jason Slattery, and Joel Baldwin from Hitchcock Design Group. Under public comment, Mrs. Haskell reported issues with parking and working done on cars in the streets and alley by Value Express at Oak and Western. They've had cars parked on the streets for weeks at a time. The police have ticketed and towed about a week ago. Commander Slattery gave an update and said they would continue to ticket and tow. Mrs. Haskell left a petition and pictures of the problem. Building and planning report for June 2017, revenues for the month of June were $50,008.5399. Total revenue for 2017 is $297,487.25. Housing court had a total of 148 violations. Under business district, a discussion about review of grant applications for the business development district was had. The committee will review applications. If need be, we would schedule a special meeting to review them. Joel Baldwin from Hitchcock Design Group made a presentation of where the business district stands at this time. The consulting work for the first phase of the project have been almost used up. He presented a plan that was presented in June for the next phase. They included costs and scope of work details for the next phase. Things included in this next phase would be site furnishing, tree replacement, place making, Old Western Avenue Streetscape, and gateway construction services. Some initial discussion of details occurred. It would not need to be done completely and could be done in parts as there is money to fund the different projects. It was moved by Alderman Bellato and second by Alderman Thompson to recommend finance committee approve the proposal. The funds come in from a loan, we can then move forward. Under alderman concerns, there were no additional concerns. There being no further business, it was moved by Alderman Thompson and second by Alderman Bellato to adjourn. Motion passed, and the meeting was adjourned at 8:27 PM. The next meeting is Thursday, August 3rd at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
Excuse me, Alderman, isn't your meeting at 7:30?
Oh, okay, yes, it is. It's under 7:30.
Mine's at 6:00.
Yes, we were, I forgot, we were changing.
Finance committee?
Okay. Finance. Finance, meeting was called ordered July 18th at 7:02. Members present, Alderman Frostop, Holly, Farrenwald, Thompson, Vera, and Ossling. Also present, City Clerk Coiser, Treasurer Bellato, Director Rita, Deputy Chief Cornell, Commander Slattery, Attorney Trugo, Hitchcock representative, Mr. Baldwin, and CPA consultant for the city of Blue Island. No public comment. I would like to make a motion to city council for the approval of accounts payable, manual check registered dated June 28th, 2017, in the amount of $104,009.2. This is a payment to mail managers for the water notice and Republic Services for garbage.
And a motion, we have second by Alderman Vera. Any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for the accounts payable for July 19th through 2017, in the amount of $358,429.67. There was a motion by Alderman Holly and a second by Alderman Farrenwald. Motion carried, and I'd like to present that to the city council as a motion.
There's a motion, is there a second? Alderman Holly, any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you.
There's also an accounts payable on the annual check dated June 28th, 2017, in the amount of $63,567.46. This is for a bond payment. There was a motion by Alderman Frostop, second by Alderman Vera. The motion carried. I'd like to make a motion to city council.
So motion, is there a second by Alderman Farrenwald? Any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you.
There's a payroll for July 14th, 2017, in the amount of $377,377,913.61. There was a motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Farrenwald. Motion carried. I'd like to make a motion to city council.
There's a motion, is there a second? Alderman Carr, any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you very much.
Next is a motion of, no, it's the next, I started, is a resolution authorizing the approval of a ward to LKQ Pick Your Park Blue Island as the highest bidder of the auto auction of used city of Blue Island vehicles. This was 12 cars, $4,600 will be received. Motion to approve by Alderman Vera, second by Alderman Thompson. Motion carried. I'd make, I'd like to make a motion to city council.
We have a motion, do you have a second by Alderman Farrenwald?
I have a question. Is that all those cars that are in the back of Public Works?
Yes. Yes. Any other questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you very much.
The next is a resolution authorizing the approval of a ward to deconstruction for Market Street, Anne Street, and Greenwood Avenue for street resourcing for the city of Blue Island in the amount of $258,746.65. Motion to approve by Alderman Frostop, second by Alderman Vera. Motion carried. I'd like to make a motion to city council.
We have a motion, do you have a second by Alderman Pittman? Any questions? Roco, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frostop.
Aye.
Frostop, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Twelve nights.
Thank you very much.
Next, finance committee meeting is August 3rd, 6:30 East Canada. No further business, the meeting was adjourned at 9:10. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Thompson. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Public health and safety committee?
Yes, your honor, the July 11th meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Present were Director John Rita, Chief James Clinker, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Commander Kevin Sisk, Commander Jason Slattery, Alderman Kulis, Alderman Pittman, Alderman Donahue, Alderman Dexter, and myself. Meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. There was a motion to approve the minutes of the June 20th meeting by Alderman Kulis, second by Alderman Donahue. Motion carried. There was no public comment. Under fire department business, the fire department had 332 calls in June, 240 were EMS calls. They responded to 11 general fire alarms and 27 minor fire alarms. They responded to 24 auto aid calls, multiple which came from posing. They had 25 calls to man the station. They received five mutual aid response calls, three fire, one ambulance, and one boat. Medical reimbursement services for June was $38,080.94. During the month of June, the fire department was called out on two factory fires in Elsip, two structured fires in Blue Island, one brush fire box alarm, one prior fire at Burger King, one structure fire in a condominium in Elsip, one dive box call at Canal in Ashford, and one auto accident at Bev Lab, one vehicle fire. Under general, the fire department assisted at the Dragon Boat Race event with Marine Two. They held a fire safety presentation at the Salvation Army Day Camp. They gave a tour of Fire Station One to the Cub Scout Troop. They participated in Phil the Booth Drive. The next dates will be July 28th and August 25th. They gave a tour of Fire Station One to the Hart District Day Camp, and there will be a Blue Island Professional Firefighter Association fundraiser at the Thunderbolt game on August 25th. Tickets are available for $10 each and can be purchased at the firehouse. Under maintenance, truck 2104 is back in service. Engine 2123 is at fire service incorporated for engine mark. Under fire prevention, fire prevention inspectors completed 18 annual inspections in the month of June. Under training, the training division completed 480 and 3/4 hours of training for the month of June. The fire department participated in active shooter mass casualty incident drill in Elsip at the Swapparama. Chief Clinker and Lieutenant Zlinsky participated in CSX crisis management tabletop exercise at Elsip Fire Department. The grants that have been applied for, we're still waiting word on. Under the police department, the funds for the AEDs have been received and the devices were ordered about two weeks ago. The police department expects the AEDs to arrive in the next week, and training will begin for everyone in the police department to operate the devices. There will be a total of seven AEDs. There has been a change in the officer's training program, which includes a sergeant overseeing the program and a new field training officer program, which should allow the police department to put more part-time officers on the street sooner. The police department recently added three new field training officers, which will help assist with this endeavor. Bob Jackson from the Rec Center has praised the efforts of part-time officer Buchanan with his interaction with the residents that come to the John V. Reader Recreation Center. Officer Buchanan plays sports with the children and talks to adults about issues in the neighborhood. Officer Buchanan is quick to help everyone and mansa police department substation several times a week. Mr. Jackson called Officer Buchanan a valuable asset to the department and feels he's worthy of recognition. I think Officer Buchanan might be there, can I?
He is.
He's back there.
What, can we bring him up? He's coming, walking up. Want to present him, Alderman? You want to give a little summary as to what you just said about the gentleman?
Okay, well, we just received some glowing reports about everything you've been doing down at the Rec Center, and so we just wanted to call it everyone's attention. We appreciate the gentleman you're doing down there, and your interaction with the children and the parents that live in the area, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. In June, the police department answered 2,395 calls for service, including 319 business premise checks, 55 of which were listed for establishment checks. Under stats and cases of interest, there were no substantiated... Two hundred and forty were EMS calls. They responded to eleven general fire alarms and twenty-seven minor fire alarms. They responded to twenty-four auto aid calls, multiple which came from posing. They had twenty-five calls to man station. They received five mutual aid response calls, three fire, one ambulance, and one boat. Medical reimbursement services for June was thirty-eight thousand, eighty dollars and ninety-four cents. During the month of June, the Fire Department was called out on two factory fires in Elsie, two structure fires in Blue Island, one brush fire box alarm, one prior fire at Burger King, one structure fire in a condominium in Elsie, one dive box call at Canal in Edmond, and one auto accident at Bev Lab, one vehicle fire. Under General, the Fire Department assisted at the Dragon Boat Race event with Marine Two. They held a fire safety presentation at the Salvation Army Day Camp. They gave a tour of Fire Station One to the Cub Scout Troop. They participated in Phil the Booth Drive. The next dates will be July the twenty-eighth and August the twenty-fifth. They gave a tour of Fire Station One to the Park District Day Camp, and there will be a Blue Island Professional Firefighter Association fundraiser at the Thunderbolt game on August twenty-fifth. Tickets are available for ten dollars each and can be purchased at the Firehouse. Under Maintenance, Truck Twenty-One Oh Four is back in service. Engine Twenty-One Twenty-Three is at Fire Service Incorporated for Engine Mark. Under Fire Prevention, Fire Prevention inspectors completed eighteen annual inspections in the month of June. Under Training, the Training Division completed four hundred and eighty and three-quarter hours of training for the month of June. The Fire Department participated in active shooter mass casualty incident drill in Elsie at the Swapparama. Chief Clinker and Lieutenant Zlinsky participated in CSX Crisis Management Tabletop Exercise at Elsie Fire Department. Uh, the grants that have been applied for, we're still waiting word on. Under the Police Department, the funds for the AEDs have been received and the devices were ordered about two weeks ago. The Police Department expects the AEDs to arrive in the next week and training will begin for everyone in the Police Department to operate the devices. There will be a total of seven AEDs. There has been a change in the officer's training program, which includes a sergeant overseeing the program and a new field training officer program, which should allow the Police Department to put more time, part-time officers on the street sooner. The Police Department recently added three new field training officers, which will help assist with this endeavor. Bob Jackson from the Rec Center has praised the efforts of Part-Time Officer Buchanan with his interaction with the residents that come to the John Rita Recreation Center. Officer Buchanan plays sports with the children and talks to adults about issues in the neighborhood. Officer Buchanan is quick to help everyone and mansa Police Department substation several times a week. Mr. Jackson called Officer Buchanan a valuable asset to the department and feels he's worthy of recognition. I think Officer Buchanan might be there tonight.
He is.
He's back there.
What, can we bring him up? He's coming, walking up. Want to present him, uh, Alderman? You want to give a little summary as to what you just said about the gentleman?
Okay, well, we just received some glowing reports about everything you've been doing down at the Rec Center. And so, we just wanted to call it everyone's attention. We appreciate the gentleman you're doing down there and your interaction with the children and the parents that live in the area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. In June, the Police Department answered two thousand three hundred and ninety-five calls for service, including three hundred and nineteen business premise checks, fifty-five of which were lipar establishment checks. Under Stats and Cases of Interest, there were no substantiated alarm calls, two armed robberies, and six residential burglaries, and two hundred and forty-nine traffic stops. Total money collected for the month of June was seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. The Police Department controlled fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty miles. There were six felony arrests and twenty-eight misdemeanor arrests. Um, our call of interest for the month on June the eighteenth, officers responded to two different armed robberies within a half hour of each other. The first incident occurred at approximately ten forty-five P M in the twenty-seven hundred block of one hundred and thirty-ninth Street. The second incident occurred at eleven P M in the area of Greenwood and Birdsall. In both incidents, the occupants of offenders of review of security exited the vehicle and approached the victim with guns. The offenders fled the scene and leads were told. During the investigation, detectives Warniak and Robins found video camera that captured the offender's car leaving the scene of the crime. The license plate was not readable, but there was noticeable damage on the vehicle. Approximately one week later, Detective, Roke, I'm sorry. Approximately one week later, detectives Warniak and Robins observed a similar vehicle with similar damage and stopped the vehicle. The driver was taken into custody. While in custody, detectives obtained a search warrant for the car and the offender's cell phone. Proceeds of one of the robberies was recovered from the car and a video of the armed robberies was on the offender's cell phone. The offender admitted to being involved. He gave up the names of the other offenders. He also told detectives where the weapons were hidden. The Detective Division, Commander Slattery, and Deputy Chief Cornell went to the address in Clement Park and recovered two high-powered rifles that were used in the robberies. Investigation is ongoing. Alderman Pulus remarked that the Police Department saves lives by following up on these crimes. Liquor salesnya calls. There were four subject removals and one fight call in the month of June. Under Training, Corporal Navarro attended a class on police supervision liability in Skokie. Corporal Sephase attended a class on scene processing for evidence technicians at West Non-Polic Department. Sergeant Harrow and Officer Strazo attended a class on recent case law at Bowling Brook Police Department. And Officers Pedron and Stamer attended SERC training. Under Officer Highlights, the Detective Division has taken four guns off the street in the month of June. It was a great job by all this month. Deputy Chief Cornell expressed his pride in the Police Department. Under miscellaneous, Community Day was held at Bethel Church on July fifteenth. The F O P Golf Outing was held July twenty-first, and National Night Out is on August first. There's actually going to be two parades on National Night Out. The first one starts at six o'clock at the Cepha Station, and the parade proceeds to Centennial Park. The second parade starts at the Meadows Golf Course at seven-thirty and proceeds to Memorial Park. And there will be a pizza party for the children at the parks when they arrive. Under the nine-one-one center, the nine-one-one center received that seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen calls in the month of June. Commander Sisk gave the Alderman an opportunity to review the contract with the Ormond Fire Protection District. Under Monthly, the Monthly Health and Sanitation Report, in the month of June, twenty-two health and sanitation inspections were done. The only major issues encountered were at Affordable Recovery and Poyo Wakuas. Poyo Wakuas has addressed their issues, and Affordable Recovery is in the process of addressing their issues. There was a discussion of the ordinance dissolving the city's Emergency Telephone System Board. Commander Sisk explained that the point of dissolve the city's nine-one-one center, the E T S B will be dissolved and the surcharge money will go to the Cook County nine-one-one center. The county will then refund half the funds to Blue Island. There was a motion by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Pulus. Motion carried. There was a discussion about the Civil Service Commission. Director Rita expressed his concern that the current Civil Service Commission has only one member. This fall, we need to do testing for fire and police. Director Rita wanted to make us aware that without a Civil Service Commission appointed by the mayor, we cannot hire police and firefighters. Under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Johnson expressed concern that by transferring our nine-one-one service to the county, that our nine-one-one calls would be handled by Chicago. Director Rita assured him that this was not the case. Alderman Johnson expressed concern about our nine-one-one employees and their employment options. Director Rita explained that employees are being given the opportunity to work for the County nine-one-one center. Alderman Johnson thanked Director Rita for the grass norm that took place in California, Arizona. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Pulus. Motion carried. The meeting was adjourned at six thirty-one P M. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August eighth, at six o'clock here in the East Annex.
Thank you very much. Chief Clinker, as mayor, as a representative of the elected officials here, my condolences to, to you, to the firefighters who are presently active and to the retired firefighters. For those who do not know, on July the twenty-first, twenty-seventeen, we laid to rest, uh, retired Lieutenant Matt O'Callahan in an unexpected death, unexpected accident that happened a few weeks before July the twenty-first in Elsie. And again, it was very impressive, even though the, the event was very saddening, the reason why everybody was together. But to see the brotherhood and sisterhood of the firefighters coming from as far north as Evanston to play their respects and to be present, to be among all of you, was very impressive. And then seeing his remains be driven away on Tower, on the Tower from Blue Island, back to the, to the funeral home, very, uh, very emotional. So I want you to relay that message not only from us, from me, to your personnel and to the retired firefighters. Again, my condolences to all.
Thank you.
Um, you know, it's both Services Committee.
Uh, we met tonight at six P M. Four more minutes, we'll be ready for next council meeting. Uh, I am here to report that the committee discussed several capital projects that will be entering into, beginning August, continuing through the construction season about November. Both motions passed out of committee and they're going to be passed to Finance Committee. And one was, uh, parking for a reserving project for the John Rita Rec Center, which was hopefully scheduled to begin October first, and that's for a hundred forty thousand dollars, and that would be out of TIP three. And Canal Street from Chad to Old Western Avenue, which will include a brand-new bike lane as part of the Cal Sac Trail, is scheduled hopefully October first, twenty-seventeen. And that also is, uh, TIP five, and that's for six hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. But I'm going to pass that on to the Finance. And also, we have the, uh, we have a motion to deny a request from the Valon Chamber of Commerce to hold weekly cruise nights to be held on North Street on Monday evenings from five to eight. The motion was made by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Slattery. I'd like to put that into a form of motion.
There's a motion. Do you have a second?
Uh, no. There is a motion to approve the request on the agenda.
Correct.
The motion failed in committee. There was a motion to deny. And that's what was passed out of committee. Mr. Steve Corbakis, uh, came to the meeting, and he is going to host Monday, on Monday nights, um, cruise night in his parking lot at no cost to the city.
Okay, so does there need to be a motion?
I didn't know. I didn't think so. I thought that if it failed in committee, it didn't. But because it was on the, um, council agenda, I wasn't sure.
You don't have a move in it.
It's moved. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then our next meeting will be, um, August.
May I ask a question?
A question.
The reason why it was denied?
We presently pay, um, I think thirty-six hundred dollars to Chamber, and it's two hundred dollars an event to Mr. Locktown. And there was a lot of discussion. It was a very lengthy, that took up most of our meeting. And then when Mr. Corbakis came, and he said he was going to host it, because of course we want it. And we weren't, there were questions from the committee regarding the actual application as to what he was asking for, if it was just to put up barricades or if it was to continue the contract, of course, which would go through Finance. And we, and then some of the Alderman had questions as to why and what the costs were, et cetera. And then, Mr. Corbakis came, and he said that he, I guess he did it, well, not I guess, he did it last night, and it was successful. And he also has someone who's going to volunteer with him, uh, Mr. Kessler. And, uh, they said that there was going to be no cost to the city. They're already planning a special event, I believe, for next Monday. Um, they had a monster truck event coming up.
So this is joint agreement with, um, the Chambers and Corbakis?
Well, that was a very heavy discussion as well.
Is, um, anyone here that could speak on, yeah?
Is, uh, Mr. Lock, do you want to step up just to clarify what the agreement is between, why don't you come up and clarify between you and Mr. Corbakis or what, Stephen? Go ahead. While we're waiting.
Okay, I, I just think that this is just a request to block off the street. This isn't a request, um...
Well, after further discussion, it got deeper and deeper, and we...
Well, maybe it got too deep.
Maybe it did. But there were questions from the committee members.
All right. Mr. Lock, go ahead.
Well, when we, the city did cruise night for a year and it didn't over well. So then we were asked to do it the following year, and we had no city support at that time. So we agreed on a two hundred dollar per event fee.
Okay.
Not a reimbursement, just two hundred dollar per event. And we would use that for advertising banners, overhead supervision, et cetera.
So as of right now, is there an agreement between the Chamber or?
That was several years ago.
But is there one right now with Corbakis? Are they going to be handling?
Uh, well, they had it last night and went very well.
Okay. And you had it, I think, the night before, correct?
Uh, previous week was at Blue Island Beer.
Okay. So is it, the idea is going to be continued from there, from that location?
It's up to the City Council.
Okay.
We, we think it's important to be in the center of town because it promotes the businesses in that area. We want people from outside town to come, have a good experience, and go home and come back and shop and eat and drink.
Because I had heard people who handled the, uh, Farmer's Market, that they weren't being that successful because there were not enough people at a certain hours. That's what I heard directly from them.
That's correct.
And that's why they wanted that if cruise night was going to happen, they would bring more people in at that hour and later at that location.
Yeah, thanks for a festive atmosphere.
Go ahead. Any other comments from the Alderman?
Well, Mike, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm just kind of baffled here because for several years, we've always had, for a long time, cruise night, and now there's a halt on this. I'm just concerned, why can't we work with the Chamber in order to have this event going? And, uh, if, if you're in agreement with, uh, the liquor store, the rakers, then, you know, that's fine too. But, I mean, are you coming to City Council to get approval to have it on York Street?
Yes.
Can we put that on the floor?
There's going to be a motion. Motion.
I made a motion to bring it to City Council for a full vote.
Motion by Alderman Ossling. Do you have a second?
Under order, it was, it was killed in committee, so it shouldn't come to the City Council at all.
It is on the agenda.
If Mr. Corbaki, Your Honor, and Mr. Corbakis would like to step up and explain. Yes, he's here as well.
Oh, there he goes.
I mean,
I didn't see him.
It's between them. We want to have a car show. We want people to come to Blue Island and shop.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Corbakis. I don't, the cruise night's a great event, whether it's on York Street, it's in my parking lot, or both. I mean, we could do it at both. We could do it at different locations, but the, I mean, as far as we're concerned, at the liquor store, if the family's concerned, we're, we want to keep the event going because it helps out business, it brings people to our place. A lot of customers enjoyed it. People from the neighborhood enjoyed it. And, I mean, I got a lot of thank yous and stuff from people. And, I mean, all the costs and everything lay on us. I'm not asking for anything. You know, I'm not trying to, you know, kick drag guy out of the way. I'm not trying to stop the cruise night in Blue Island on York Street. I just like you to know that I'm going to keep doing what we're doing because it's just, it's a great event for the town. It brings people to town, brings people that are actually in town, brings them out of their house to see what's going on. I mean, yeah, we have some different events planned. I mean, I mean, my family, we're car people. My friends are car guys. It's just, we just like doing it. Me and my brother, we don't get to go out much to different cruise nights and stuff like that. So we just kind of brought the cruise night to our parking lot. All right.
I have a motion on the floor.
So the motion on the floor, the motion as written in the agenda, and that is to
Approve.
Approve the weekly cruise nights to be held on York Street on Monday evenings from five for those specified dates, and that's it.
Correct.
So...
What was the point of having it in committee?
Would that include financial obligations?
That does not, the motion on the floor is solely to allow for the cruise night to be held on York Street. That does not create a financial responsibility because that's not part of the motion.
I move table.
So...
There's another motion. First, is there a second?
If there's...
I second.
The Bureau?
What, if there's a second to table, you have to call that one. So what's the second?
I second the table.
Wait a minute, my motion was not...
Under order, out of order, the table.
The table supersedes the motion. That's why, if there's a second to table, that's the motion that has to come to the floor. If there's no second to table, then the original motion continues. So if there's a motion and a second to table.
Okay.
So that has to be voted first.
Rokeau.
Rita.
What is the motion?
The table.
This is the table.
Aye.
The table. Aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Ossling.
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
No.
Thompson, no. Frosto.
No.
Frosto, no. Viera.
No.
Viera, no. Five no's. Seven ayes.
That's good. Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any other business? Municipal Services?
Uh, no. The next meeting will be August twenty-second at St. Mary.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
Great. Judiciary Committee met Monday, July seventeenth, at the East Annex. It was called to order at seven P M. President were Alderman Farinwald, Pittman, and Viera. There was no public comment. And I'd like to put in a motion to rescind the handicap parking space at twenty-four Forty-one West One Hundred and Twentieth Place. This was approved in committee. So I'd like to make a motion. Do you have a second? Valman Carr. Any questions? Rokeau, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Call by your honor.
Thank you.
All right, and the, uh, I'd just like to add to that, that, um, the request initially come from Alderman Thompson, and the committee requested to know the reason for it, which was that the resident had moved. And, uh, we also requested that in the future, there be a process to make sure that we're informed of what those reasons are. We did have a, an, a matter relating to damaged personal injury claims, golf damage to windows at two properties. There was a motion to table by Alderman Viera, seconded by Pittman. And it was noted through discussion that Director Rita has a meetings, or that by Director Rita, the meeting has been set for August twenty-third at the city golf course for residents to discuss the city's damage reimbursement policy with officials. Uh, we had a discussion about golf course liability, and, uh, committee members agreed that a program which the city agrees to pay for a portion of one or more screens at property locations might be a desirable alternative to paying for damage. Uh, in any event, the motion to table carried. Under Alderman's concerns, uh, it was proposed by Alderman V. and agreed by Alderman Pittman and Viera that future Judiciary Committee meetings be held on the third Monday of each month at six P M. And then there was a discussion about presuming the updating of...
And there was a discussion about presuming the updating of city ordinances. Ordinances Title IX through Title IX have been updated, leaving Titles 10 to 12 for completion. And it was agreed to defer work on Titles 10 and 12 until the city appoints a director who will be in charge of related building and zoning ordinances. Work will be started on Title 11, which deals with offenses, and for which Director Rita can provide information to the committee. Review of that matter will be resumed at the next Judiciary Committee meeting. The next meeting of the Judiciary Committee meeting will be Monday, August 21st at 6:00 P.M. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Pittman, seconded by Vera, and voiced hold to carry at 7:40 P.M. Anything else? That's it. Thank you very much. Any Alderman have any questions?
I have a question. Did you say there was a golf meeting? Did I, am I hearing things?
We were told there was a meeting scheduled for August 23rd.
Yeah. And I, I think that that woman should be invited to that meeting.
They want it to be separate meeting. She was invited.
Okay.
There's a separate homeowner association.
Okay.
Right.
I know. Okay. All right, thank you.
It's going on there, Ossling.
Any Alderman have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Alderman. Donahue?
Thank you, Your Honor. Starting next Wednesday, August 2nd to August 6th, is the evening of St. Canis Carnival. So come out to the east side, order lots of pizza, clams, and sausage sandwiches, and buy rides, spend some of your money, and hang out at the old neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly?
The Christmas Parade Committee has a fundraiser on Friday night. It's called Let It Glow, Let It Glow, Let It Glow. We're having night golf, night beanbag, night frisbee golf, and night badminton. So, tickets are $20 a person, $40 if you want to golf with a cart. It's three holes at the golf course. It'll start probably about 8:30-ish. Doors open at 7:00 and the golfing and night stuff will start at around 8:30. So it should be fun. So hopefully, come out.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Alderman Perrinwald?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just ask that you please, as you're considering your appointments coming up here, that there be provision made so that the city's website can be updated and maintained. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody because I know it's been a project that we've all talked about for a while. But I think there needs to be a dedicated resource. It's an important form of communication with the residents. And I just would like to see that put in somebody's hands who's, you know, who's got the time to handle it.
Since our beloved president uses Twitter, maybe we should actually.
Alderman Perrinwald, what time does that start on Friday night?
It starts at 7:00 o'clock and then the, when it's daylight, you can still do the activities too. But the golfing will start around 8:30 when it gets started.
Any other comments from the Alderman? If not, any motion for adjournment? Motion by Alderman Johnson? Alderman? Sorry. I was wondering if we could get some help to get some playground chips down at the playground down by the rec center. Okay, I'll make a note of it. It's sort of been barren on my pocket, so I'm going to sort of ask for some help. I know we don't have a budget yet for it. But to, because it's getting bare where you can start to see concrete. Next thing is I got the Black Star project off 35th and King Drive. We have 50 tickets to the game Friday for the Sky against Phoenix Mercury. The tickets are free. And they got a bus leaving Black Star at 5:30. And if anybody or their kids are interested, it's absolutely free. Which in this world, we don't get much for free no more. That is true. And have you volunteered yet? That's it. All right. Any other comments? Not any. A motion for adjournment? Motion by Alderman Pittman, seconded by Alderman Slattery. All in favor?
Aye.
Give votes. Thank you very much.